Ladies, please.
Our Lady of the Regent's to the flag. In the United States of America. And in the true republic for which we stand. One nation, of God. Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Today's inspiration is from the book of James, chapter one, verse five. If any of you need wisdom, you should ask God for it. Thomas came with doubts. Did Christ turn him away? Moses had his reservations. Did God tell him to go home? Job had his struggles. Did God avoid him? Paul had his hard times. Did God abandon him? No, God never turns away the sincere heart. Tough questions, don't stump God. He invites our probing. Mark it down. God never turns away the honest seeker. Go to God with your questions. You may not find all the answers. But in finding God, you know the one who does. Heavenly Father, as we do the business of Finney County today, please guide us. Keep our citizens safe during the Thanksgiving holiday. We ask this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Good morning, all.
Afternoon.
My golly, it is. It's been a long day. Good afternoon, all.
Morning somewhere.
It's morning somewhere. Five o'clock somewhere, too.
Yeah.
First off is a term of comments. I want to make a quick comment. Yesterday was the National Public Health Appreciation Day. And today, late, I realize that. But publicly, I would like to express my support, as well as the mission's support, for our hard-working folk we have in the health department. These folks have been going above and beyond for way longer than they needed to. And this doesn't look like it's going to end for them very soon. They're really dedicated and we're very proud of them. They do a fantastic job and probably the hardest-working people we have in the county right at the moment. And my hat's off to them and I really appreciate everything they've done and continue to do for us. And I see the head of our health department, Colleen, I want you to know how grateful the commission are for you and your people. All right, we only have a couple of business items. Can we have a quick approval of our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of our agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Motion is carried. We have some public comments, but that pertains to a further further down the line on the governor's executive order, if I'm not mistaken. So we're going to get into what one of our more important parts is the Spark Grant Program updates. This is a program that's coming down to the wire. We have to probably two more meetings to approve these grants. And so hopefully I'll see Jeff's name on the screen. Jeff, you are there. I appreciate that. So could you take over and fill us in on what we really need to get accomplished today? I see we have quite a list in front of us. So it's all yours.
Great. Thank you, Chairman. Looking in front of you, we've got a couple of items. There are thirteen household emergency relief grants that we're recommending to you today for a total of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventeen cents. Apologies for the late notice on, you know, the late send on this. Hope we were able to sneak in a couple more individuals that were at risk of having utilities shut off. And definitely with the holiday coming in, we didn't want that to happen. So we're able to get that in right under the wire. So these awards, again, as a reminder to everyone, were submitted. They, none of these dollars go directly to these individuals. They go to satisfy their debts to their mortgage company or their utility provider. There is, they are paid on these individuals' behalfs. Any questions there?
Jeff, you have quite a few more in the works. Is that correct?
We do, yes. So we have a number of more awards coming for the seventh. Our goal, as I mentioned, I think during our last meeting, is to have everything, all of these grants that are in the system awarded and adjudicated by the seventh. And we're still actually targeting that deal. These are for all of the outstanding household emergency relief grants. We have, I think, my last check was over fifty that we're still finalizing some of the adjudication on that our team is working through. And then you don't have any agency operational relief grants in front of you today. We do have a number of those that we'll be processing. Actually, potentially up to, based on our estimates, an average number of potentially up to one point five million dollars worth of agency operational relief grants that we're going through here.
Gentlemen, any questions on the household emergency relief list, people?
Jeff, will Dr. Clifford, will other applicants be considered or the deadline passed? And that's it? I know there are more funds available, so just curious.
Dr. Clifford, I'm sorry, I didn't hear a word that you said.
Will other applicants be considered since there's still money left in this fund?
So we shut off the, we shut off the household emergency relief grant on November sixteenth per your direction. I think I mentioned that at the last commission meeting. So we're just now reviewing those that are in the cleanup of the process.
Thank you.
So, yeah, if there are additional items, you know, additional individuals, we do have the grant program closed. You know, there is the potential that we could reopen it. But then we'd be, we'd have to get people to get their stuff in ASAP so that we could then come back. We would likely be able to get those processed for the seventh. But if it's your desire, we could probably get those processed for the twenty-first, one of those last meetings.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Further comments? Lon?
Uh, this is Lon, if anybody's online but, or on the phone. Jeff, then the monies that are left after these other applications, and this goes back to things we've said over the period of time. Then the monies from this will go somewhere else? And are we still needing somewhere else? And I know I've asked this question before and we've talked about not, that we're not going to turn money back. But I, I'm a little confused yet as far as how we're going to use the funds before the end of the year.
Sure. So let me talk about that, Commissioner Pishney, how I can bring that. We have, you know, our plan in working with the staff and with Robert and the team is pretty solid as it relates to looking at costs. So one of the things that there's an administrative exemption within within the Spark Grant Program through CARES that we can reimburse the county for public safety salaries, you know, public safety, public health salaries that are actively engaged in the response to the COVID-19 pandemic. It's an administrative exemption that will allow us to basically claim the straight, the entire wage for, I mean, use EMS for the example. So we can claim the entire salary for EMS, all of your EMS providers, from March first through December thirtieth. We looked at that last week with staff and we've got it earmarked. We've got funds in addition, you know, in excess of what you would have remaining based on our estimates. So the goal would be, on the meeting on the seventh, we would meet the needs of the community first, making sure that those HHR and AOR grant awards are made. And then we would reimburse the county using those remaining funds. We've really made a focus on, you know, getting the dollars out to the community and meeting those needs. And this would be a cleanup for the county and other entities that need it.
Well, I, I appreciate that refresher. I'd forgotten about the EMS and some of those things. So thank you for that refresher.
No problem. So, yeah, it's something we've been tracking closely. It's one of my big, you know, big pieces and Robert and I have been talking about it. Robert, I think I'm bothering you every day about it now.
Good. Do I?
I'm done.
My question is for Roxanne. Did you have any applicants come in after November sixteenth?
We had two.
Two? Are, is there a possibility you might consider them with you have remaining funds?
That would be at your discretion.
Well, you know, I would say if you got funds left, I think.
Except where you draw the line, Larry.
Well, but you, they were right there and that's only, you don't have two.
I think anything you could, anything you could complete, like before the deadline, I'd be willing to consider, especially two that you have in hand. I realize there's a lot of follow-up on utility bills and landlord contact. So there is a task. But if it can be completed, I would be in favor of it.
Jeff, this is Dave with a quick question for you. The checks have to be written and the bank account closed on the last day of this calendar year. Is that correct? The money has to be out and spent?
Yes, the money has to be spent and substantially complete. By, more than substantially complete, it's going to be spent and any of the things that have been purchased with it be put into operation. So it's, you know, some of the things that we've talked about are projects that can't be completed within the timeframe, unfortunately. But it's got to be complete, received unless there was a substantial supply delay by the thirtieth of December.
Okay, thank you. Let's deal with the thirteen awards that are in front of us, gentlemen.
I'm going to accept the thirteen, or grants with money to the thirteen awards.
Clifford, second.
All those in favor of approving the thirteen household emergency relief grants that are in front of us, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Jeff, I think the consensus is if you can get those last two before us in front of the seventh, we can, we will probably make an exception. Other than that, if it can't be in front of us by the seventh, I would probably say it's too late.
Well, no problem. So Roxanne, if I, I hear that you're in the room. You know, if you want to follow up with Julianne, we'll get those other two in.
Good.
Okay.
Moving forward.
Yeah, so the next piece on the response and recovery side, unfortunately, we're not able to recommend an award for the Makerspace. I spoke with Shannon yesterday, you know, from the Makerspace. And other than buying a building, which, you know, there was some significant complications as it related to buying part of the building, whole of the building, you know, those pieces. We explored in our conversation opportunities that we could potentially do to enhance their capabilities. They had done a great thing for the community in, you know, creating some of the PPE. But they were able to apply for some other grants and get those funded. So, you know, really kudos to them for doing that. So unfortunately, we're not going to be able to move forward with an award under the Response and Recovery Program. So just, we wanted to denote that for you in this report. And if there needed to be any board action on that, let that continue.
Gentlemen, I think we should at least acknowledge it in a motion, either deny or or accept the recommendation that this Makerspace be not awarded a grant, something to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I would so move.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. All in favor of the motion to deny the Makerspace request? All those in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. And then the last one is a reimbursement request from the Juvenile Attention Center. So where the request here is, or the way I wrote this up for you is to request up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the county administrator's discretion for, with final number to be reported to you all on the December seventh commission meeting. So the purposes of this are to reimburse for the salaries of the correctional officers that are from March first through December thirtieth, very similar to how I was just describing, how we'd reimburse the county. These are eligible based on the September second updated coronavirus relief fund guidance. This is stuff that the state had included as a recommendation. The reason that we're putting the up to is we, we need to assign actual salaries and actual individuals to those salaries. So we just need to do some comparison. By providing up to that assistance, it helps support some of the operations that are there at the Juvenile Attention Center. And we can report back that number to you once we have those individuals satisfied. But, you know, this was being, this is the board meeting in November. We want to show the state that we have expended funds. We wanted to include, that come out now.
Okay, questions for Jeff on this? Hearing none. Question?
Jeff, did we forego reimbursement of all the meals provided by JDC for the testing center when it was active?
No, we're going to, we're going to roll those in. We can roll those in as part of the reimbursement to the county.
And then do we expect the city to come forward and ask for total reimbursement for the fire department for this interval of time?
Okay, my understanding is that Jeff has received some requests for reimbursement from the city. Is that correct, Jeff?
That's correct. And I got to confirm with Matt, I don't know if he is in the room, but I'll be reaching out, Matt, for us to talk about some of the numbers, just to confirm pieces. They had looked at the police chief's salary and the fire chief's salary because they were substantially dedicated to supporting COVID-19 operations. And again, I think there's broad latitude to that as it relates to public safety and public health salaries based on the updated COVID-19 guidance.
Thank you.
What's your pleasure on the reimbursement side of this Sparks grant?
Chairman, Dr. Clifford, I'd like to move to approve this award at the discretion of our county administrator to pay it concerning JDC salaries and other public safety workers involved in the coronavirus relief effort.
And Mr. Chairman, up to four hundred and fifty thousand, I would second that motion.
All right, I'm not going to attempt to repeat your words, Commissioner Clifford. So all those in favor, Commissioner Clifford's motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So the last, next meeting, the seventh regular commission meeting, you're going to have an abundance of work for us to do, aren't you, Jeff?
Yes, sir. I'm going to have a number of grants for you as we clean up the last little pieces. So, you know, we'll be, you know, allocating a significant amount of money on the seventh. And if there's anything left over, we'll look to the twenty-first and to be allocating those last remaining funds. This will put us on track to close out the grant before the end of the year. And then this way ensure that all the funds get spent to help Finney County and all the eligible applicants underneath it.
Further questions for Jeff before we say adieu? All right. Thank you very much, Jeff. Have a fantastic holiday weekend. If you can take a day off to do so, but we appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Have a great weekend and happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, we're here for the final topic of discussion today, the governor's executive order. I believe we have several requested written comments that I will have our clerk read and then we'll ask for public comment. And then we'll get Colleen with her latest health department update. So if you have some requested.
Yep, we have two. The first is from David Hop, Garden City. At a staggering forty-five percent positivity rate and climbing, the COVID-19 virus is a wildfire with zero containment. Mandatory mask mandate is four months too late. A more drastic approach is going to be needed if there's any hope to slow the spread. I had COVID and it took eight days after testing positive to hear from the health department regarding contact tracing. By then, the point was moved. We need to consider lockdown alternatives if we have any chance to slow this COVID progression. It's not going to slow down on its own. Drastic times call for drastic measures. Otherwise, we will continue to reap the whirlwinds. The second is from Carolyn McPhee of Garden City. Finney County Commissioners, here I am again imploring you to take action to slow the out-of-control spread of COVID-19 in our county. Our positivity rate has increased, hospitalizations have increased, and our deaths have increased since your last meeting as the Finney County Board of Health. Our hospital and staff continue to be stretched to the breaking point. Our Garden City schools have now went to all remote learning. Finney County is about to surpass Ford County in the number of positive cases. And Finney County is in the top one hundred counties in the nation for fastest COVID case growth per capita. And that was from the New York Times. You have another chance to do the right thing, either by allowing the governor's mask mandate to take effect or implementing your own. Please then put measures in place to enforce these mandates. No one wants these mandates and no one wants to enforce them. Unfortunately, the many people who are choosing not to follow the recommendation or the recommended CDC, KDHE, FCHD guidelines have created this out-of-control health crisis in our county that must be acted upon. Therefore, I implore you to either give the governor's order, to allow the governor's order to take effect, or as a county, implement a mask mandate, gathering limits, and any other proposed directives from Finney County Health Department in regards to COVID-19 for the health and well-being of the people of Finney County.
Thank you. We will hear the public comment and immediately after that, we will move into the Board of County Health. So public comment, you have five minutes.
Okay, I won't take that long, but thank you. I'm Barbara Willis. I'm the Chief Nursing Officer for St. Catherine Hospital. So Finney County Commissioners, across southwest Kansas, we are still seeing an increase in the prevalence of COVID-19 in our communities. With our neighbors, sorry, with our neighbors' health and suffering in mind, we continue to monitor the trends and data to guide the decision-making and ensure that we are always prepared. With the safety of our caregivers and patients a top priority, Centura Health Hospitals, Bob Wilson in Ulysses and St. Catherine in Garden City, and our clinics across the southwest Kansas area continue to follow protocols from the Kansas Health Department and Fire Department and CDC and other local agencies. St. Catherine Hospital is currently in a visitation-level red. What this means is the public cannot come in, no visitors and no perpetual adoration. If someone's at end of life or something like that, we do make an exception for that. We do allow visitation through iPads, but that's the only way that our patients are able to see their loved ones. St. Catherine Hospital daily monitors the potential surge levels based on the following. The number of COVID patients, the number of patients on a ventilator, BiPAP, or heated high flow, the number of ICU vets occupied, and staffing concerns. The surge planning criteria is then determined if we are in conventional contingency or crisis capacity. We have been in a crisis capacity since October twenty-second. We have had to look for staffing in non-conventional ways, non-medical people coming up and helping with answering phones, delivering water and running for supplies. It is important that we, in partnership with our communities, do everything we can to slow and stop the spread of coronavirus. We all know the three W's: wear a mask, watch your distance, and wash your hands. Please consider taking steps to ensure personal good health like establishing healthy eating and physical fitness routines. Hand hygiene is critical. Wash your hands before and after handling food, entering or leaving a facility, or interacting with people. And stay home as much as possible, especially if you experience any symptoms. But do not delay seeking medical care for any medical condition. For your time spent in the workplace, please consider implementing some best practices in your organization. Work from home if possible. Instead of in-person meetings, try a virtual platform. For training and other activities that require hands-on activity, consider postponing if it doesn't impact regular business practices. All Centura caregivers, clinical and non-clinical, are required to wear masks within our facilities, even when they're not directly delivering patient care. When providing direct patient care, caregivers and providers in all care settings are required to wear Centura-approved personal protective equipment. We need to continue to focus on wearing masks when we're around others, maintaining social distancing, and proper hand washing. It is interesting that these time-trusted, very basic personal interventions are still the best defense against an epidemic until a safe and effective vaccine is administered. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon. My name is Bonnie Brubiaska. I have been a Holcombe resident for thirty-some years and a southwest Kansas resident all my life. And I have a daughter who's a senior in high school. I am also a small business owner. I own and operate graphic stitching and Brubiaska concessions. I am also a bookkeeper for three businesses here in Garden City, as well as a substitute teacher for USD three-six-three and USD four-five-seven. I come to you today to urge you to vote in favor of a mask mandate in Finney County. As I mentioned above, I own a food concessions business. I travel to various fairs and festivals here in Kansas and a few events in Colorado. This past summer, all of my events, with the exception of a few Food Truck Fridays here in Garden City, as well as one other area event, were all canceled due to COVID-19. This meant my income for my business was almost completely nonexistent. I depend on the money earned over the summer months just to sustain me throughout the year. This is not the case this winter. I'm hoping for an end to all of this before my season starts again in the spring, but it's not looking good so far. I am asking you to vote for the mask mandate because, put simply, what do we have to lose? Sure, they are uncomfortable at times. Yes, I can't see the bright smiles of others that I pass at the grocery store. But all in all, the medical professionals agree that a mask is a good defense against this horrible virus. When I have a medical issue, I go to a doctor. If I had a disease or condition that needed treatment, I don't tell them how to handle it. I depend on their expertise to offer the best treatment options available, and I follow them. This is the same thing. Medical professionals are telling us to wear a mask. Let's try it. If we all follow the rules and we still have this high rate of COVID in our county a month or two from now, then we can at least say we tried to stop the spread. If it works and our rates are lower, there will be more. If it works and our rates are lower, there will be more fellow Finney Countyans right here that have not died due to this deadly virus. One last thing at the beginning that I would like to say, was at the beginning, I also told you I have a daughter that is a senior at Garden City High School. I am a single mom, she is my only child. I really want to be able to celebrate my only child's graduation and watch her walk across the stage. I want her also to be able to celebrate with her friends. Please, I urge you to follow the city of Garden City and pass a mask mandate for Finney County, so that I, as a citizen of Holcombe and Finney County, will be protected as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Donna Gerschner, and I have been a Finney County resident since nineteen eighty-six, and I've lived in western Kansas all my life. I reside in Commissioner Pishy's district. I was not going to come today because I knew this meeting would be full of those not wearing masks, but I thought, I've been saying all along that I'm not afraid of this virus for me, but I'm afraid for the older lady that I drive home on Wednesday nights from fire, where we do wear masks seeing, or my brother who has diabetes. So, I'm here representing those that do not feel comfortable being here or have no immune system, so they must stay away. Who knows? I may be sick tomorrow due to exposure from you that choose not to wear a mask today. Yesterday, I took a drive at four-thirty to the Fairgrounds parking lot, where I saw a line of six cars waiting to be tested. I was wondering how many people felt the need to get tested yesterday but could not get into Genesis or the Health Department and had to come to the Fairgrounds to be tested by an outside company. There are a lot of people that believe that the masks work, but they are the silent majority, just as they were when secondhand smoke was an issue, and the government finally protect- protected the silent majority from others that would not protect them. This is the same thing we are asking you, to protect us from those that do not want to protect us. Your job as a county health board is to make decisions on health matters. This is a health matter. Our schools have closed their doors to the children, and parents are trying to decide if they should work or stay home. If the community continues to get sick, there will be no one available to work at the hospital, the grocery store, the mall, and downtown. We'll be closed for business, all because you would not wear a mask. Thank goodness the city saw the need and listened to the health community, or we would be going down with the ship. We're currently on the list of hotspots in the nation, and I'm not talking about statewide, I'm referring to the New York Times information that came out this week, for counties to stay away from. Two weeks ago, a gentleman at the city commission meeting was asking why South Dakota and North Dakota, that never shut down or never had a mask requirement, were doing well, when in fact, per capita nationally, they are doing the worst, according to the Post in this week's New York Times. Highest hospitalization rate is in South Dakota in the country. Metro area in my note, not, North Dakota has the most recent cases per capita. This is community members reading old statistics to prove a point, instead of researching the newest information, information, which I feel has been done a lot, to prove their ben- beliefs. Giving you outdated information instead of what we have learned during this pandemic. Norton County, Kansas, is the worst county per capita in the nation. Yes, they do not wear masks. We are not far behind. Our positivity rate made the national news this month. Currently, there are twenty in the hospital at St. Catherine with COVID or being tested for COVID. Is this something that our Board of Health is proud of? You have to be told, you're, by your own medical community, that masks work, but you do not listen. You, you take your car to a medical doctor when you hear a bad noise? No, you take it to a professional mechanic. Why then do you not listen to professionals that have advised you? By not mandating a mask requirement, are you saying that we can lose a few people? And we, as a Board of Health, know more than our local health professionals? My friend Callie Dyer, a lifetime resident of Finney County, a week ago needed to be placed in ICU, not because of COVID, but for other health reasons. Could not get a bed due to the hospital being full. She had to be taken to Primrose Hospital in Colorado Springs. She has availability to have someone pick her up, but many families cannot do this in our town. This is what is happening to our citizens, trying to get into the hospital, and you may be the next one that needs a hospital bed. Do the right thing today, protect all your citizens, countywide. Do not allow us to have, to shut down again by being afraid of a piece of cloth. We've had too many people die and hospitalized these past six weeks that could have been prevented in many cases. I do not want to see another obituary from COVID because we are a bunch of hicks and do not believe in medical advice, because right now, that is how we are being perceived in the country. Do the right thing, Commissioners. Pass this bill that, that Governor Kelly has put before you. And I do thank you for your time, because I do realize that you guys put a lot of extra work into being a county commissioner, so thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Further comment? All right, gentlemen, let's move into Board of Health.
I'm going to move into the commission meeting and, uh, convene the Board of County Health.
Second?
We've moved in second, no votes in favor, see if the vibe is saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good afternoon, I've gotta write this thing, afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon, I was very tempted to say good morning again.
I did it.
So, I'll start off by giving you the current data on the last week, so the first week of November all the way through, um, just so that you can see the, um, rise, I have a full two weeks' data. The data of last week is still incomplete. So, for November first through the seventh, we had three hundred and forty-two positive cases with a forty-five percent positivity rate. For the following week, November eighth through the fourteenth, we have four hundred and thirty-two positives with a forty-seven percent positivity rate. Our average hospitalizations also increased to fifteen. Um, today at the hospital, the current hospitalization number is twenty-one. The average has increased to, um, sixteen. I pulled the last five days of data that I've had so far to look at that. Additionally, I did email to you Commissioners, a new report that was released by the White House about Kansas. Um, I don't know if any of you had a chance to look at it yet?
Yes.
So, just a couple of highlights there. Um, Kansas is in the red, red zone for cases indicating a hundred or more, a hundred and one or more cases per one hundred thousand population, with the twelfth highest rate in the country. Kansas is in the red zone for test positivity, indicating a rate at or above ten percent, with the fourth highest rate in the country. Kansas had six hundred and sixty-nine new cases per one hundred thousand population, compared to a national average of three hundred and fifty-six per hundred thousand. So, almost double. Uh, if I took the same rate of cases for Finney County compared to that national average, we have an average of twelve hundred cases per hundred thousand. Twelve hundred cases per hundred thousand. We're almost, we're, we're three-point-five times higher than the national average. Um, also, you can see some of the recommendations. The recommendations from the White House is continue strong Thanksgiving messaging, um, increase asymptomatic, presymptomatic testing, um, increase physi- physical distance, ensure masks at all times in public, make sure that the Americans understand clear risks of any family or friend interactions outside of their immediate household indoors without masks. Ensure compliance with public health orders, including wearing masks. There are a variety of information here in that report that I provided to you, who will also use some of this information to design and direct our initiatives here for the next several weeks, um, through the holiday season, which increases, which is partly increasing our messaging to our community, education outreach, and ensuring that the data is there for people to make those decisions with that data, so that we ensure accurate information that is released. Um, of course, increased hospitalizations, as you have heard time and time again, are also huge indicators for the proactive behaviors. And what I'm here to talk about today is masks aren't the one end-all-be-all of all of our problems. It is a collective action. It's mask-wearing, it's social distancing, it's staying with your household members, it's washing your hands, sanitizing frequently-used surfaces and items. All of these per, all of these precautions, in a collective way, help make a difference for our community. When you look at the prevalence of the disease and transfer within our community comparatively across the nation, we're not doing very well. And I think those numbers can really, really prove that. That's all I had, unless there are any questions.
Questions for Colleen?
Colleen, have, have, has the, uh, state reached out to you about, um, possibilities of being in one of the primary sites for vaccine, since our rates are so high?
Um, I haven't gotten any recent information about vaccines, uh, currently. There are a couple of collective groups that, um, so Kansas University, KU, um, public health initiatives, um, they're all working to launch some sites here eventually, so clinical trials as well, but it's all kind of in the works, very preliminary information on that so far, and then we did register with CDC and KDHE to be a vaccine site, um, once there is an availability of that.
Good.
Doctor? The, uh, number twelve hundred per hundred thousand, uh, is that a CDC number, is that as of today, or are there different numbers four, four days ago?
So, we took our, um, our population divided by a hundred thousand to get that rate of population difference, and then multiplied it by our new cases per week off of the same, um, week completion from KDHE's site, so the covid.kas.gov took that case number to multiply it to find this number.
Okay, yeah, I, I'll show some numbers, uh, here in the meeting that, that, uh, are actually greater than your number, I just wondered, uh, although four days ago is, is where this was derived from and...
Sure, and that might be a difference between, um, current new cases versus cumulative cases, so our cumulative cases from March to now versus, um, new cases in the last week, so that might be a little bit of the reason for the differential.
And the number of active cases in Finney County, in my mind, is probably twenty-five perc- percent of what we've ever had. Did, would you agree with that, or?
Um, our actively monitoring number is over a thousand, I believe it's pretty close to the eleven-hundred, um, which that's confirmed positives, as well as testing people under investigation, um, but that's all that have tested. I believe that there's probably strong prevalence of more, um, cases within our community than what we are aware of.
But if what you are aware, uh, it would represent twenty-five percent of what we've ever had since March, given we have, like, forty-five hundred positives...
Yes, that'd be correct.
So, that's, that's a lot. Uh, will the testing facility, uh, Fairgrounds, provide you information on a fairly timely basis?
Sure, um, so the, the testing site, they, um, collectively report their results to the state, and then the state turns around and reports it to us. So, with it just started on Monday, I'm not sure what that time, turnaround time is gonna be, um, looking at their testing results, uh, at being anywhere between thirty-six and ninety-six hours is what they have, have said. Oftentimes, their average is thirty-two hours, but I believe they're telling people forty-eight to ninety-six hours for testing results. Um, it is an oral swab, um, they are doing the testing, uh, Monday through Friday from nine to six, and then ten to five on Saturdays, they are closed this Thursday for Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I, I actually bailed myself of their testing yesterday, and you're right, it's a two to four days turnaround, but I, I would hope they would share that, uh, number with us, and I would ask anyone who is interested in a test to go out there and do it, it's, it's easy.
Yep.
Uh, thank you.
Dave?
I'm gonna take a mask down for a minute in violation of things you're, but my glasses are fogging up, so, pardon me for a minute. Uh, Colleen, uh, I've made this statement before, I'm gonna repeat it because I think it's important for the public to know. In May and early June, we, as a county commissioner or as a county Board of Health, were wrestling with the Governor's mandate, which, among other things, included mandatory mask-wearing, but, but people tend to forget it had some other things that were, were somewhat harmful, we felt, as a, as a Board of Health to our economy, and that was, non-essential businesses were closed, if you remember that, and, uh, the, the gathering of people was limited for a while at ten, and later was expanded to twenty-five, but we had all sorts of, uh, kind of, uh, tough to, to follow rules, and so, we unanimously, as a, as a county Board of Health, opted out of the Governor's protocol, which included masks. At that time, though, we were experiencing about thirty positives per week in this county, and the trend was going down, so it seemed like an, an appropriate time to opt-out. Things have changed, our, now our positives are four hundred a week and going up, it appears, would that be a safe statement?
Absolutely.
So, uh, I'm not, I'm not personally convinced that masks are the see-all, come-all, fix-all, and, and the reports you sent us, that, uh, that the White House prepared, listed the three top counties in Kansas in terms of, of positive numbers, of course, they're big counties, but that was Johnson, Sedgwick, and Shawnee. Coincidentally, all three of them have mandatory mask requirements, so it didn't fix things for them. I don't think it's gonna probably be the fix for us, but, but I will be the first to admit that something different maybe needs to be tried, and, and so, I'm, I'm gonna condition my remarks on that. Donna made a comment a while ago about a silent majority, I wanna assure you folks in the audience, we don't have a silent majority, we have a whole bunch of folks with email accounts, and they have our addresses, and they have our phone numbers, and we've heard from more folks, I never knew there were so many medical professionals until this thing came on. We've got medical professionals on any side of the issue you wanna take up, so, uh, I, I admire what you folks at the Health Department are doing, I know it's, it's a struggle, and, perhaps the, the vaccine will be, be the panacea here to get us through this, but, uh, that said, uh, I would like to see some harmony in this, in this community. Uh, first, we had a battle over politics, now it's a battle over masks. Whether you wear one or don't wear one seems to influence people to have an adverse opinion, so, that's, that's a comment that, that, uh, I'm just stating my personal position, not reflecting how the other Commissioners feel, so, thank you.
Laurent?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and, uh, unlike last time, I, I don't have prepared remarks, but my remarks are around things that have been said here today and around information, and, and not just information, but thoughts, uh, that have been shared with me through text and email and phone calls, I had, uh, two phone calls yesterday, uh, saying, opt out of this mask mand- mandate. Uh, and, and, and like Dave, I'm speaking as, as one of five here. I, I'm most disturbed by mandates. I am most disturbed that we, uh, don't allow our citizens to, not citizens, our residents, uh, to think for themselves, uh, with regard to this. Uh, I still, and I'm repeating myself here from, uh, nu- numerous meetings, still focus on hospitalizations, and I respect what you said, that, that they've jumped up some, uh, I, uh, more than the positives, because... Uh, I, more than the positives, because in my circle of, of friends, uh, the positives haven't meant very much, because one spouse has been in the hospital for, uh, two or three weeks, was just released. The other spouse, who was a caregiver, has shown no signs, and, and this is over the last six weeks. Uh, so, some of this stuff with regard to, to positives, uh, I, I don't put a lot of credit, uh, credibility into. But the hospitalizations, I do pay attention to, and especially the ones who are in ICU, and I know of a couple right now who are in ICU and, and struggling. Dave raises the point that I was gonna raise too. Uh, the, there's false information being shared now, and it's been refuted, uh, very clearly that the, uh, cases in non-mandated counties have gone up where mandated counties have not, and that is not true. Uh, that is not, uh, true information. And Johnson, Cedric, and Shawnee counties are, are very, uh, good examples of why that's not true. Masks and vaccines are, are not the sole answers, and I, it was mentioned here last time, I, or, excuse me, in a previous meeting, Mr. Chairman, that enforcement is a, an issue. And when I know of one county who's gone to court four different times to close bars in that county, that troubles me, uh, when we're pitting our county commissions and our counties against private businesses. Uh, also, I read, uh, a, a piece that was sent to me just, uh, an hour or so before this meeting about a sheriff in another county who says, "I'm not going to enforce this. This is, is, this is open to the, uh, public to make the decision if they want to wear the mask or not." So, uh, the enforcement piece i- is troubling to me as well. Those comments being said, my question to you, Colleen, is all we seem to hear about, not just here in Fannie County, but the, the state is putting a million five into a public service announcement campaign. I think it started today, possibly, or sometime this week. And it's all focused on the three Ws: wash your hands, watch your distance, and wear your mask. To me, that is not how we educate people. And I know Donna, uh, in her campaign for T21, that's not how we educated people, by creating more fear and saying, and giving people the impression those are the answers to the problem. I just visited with the, the friend who got out of the hospital a few days back, and he's anti-mask, first of all. And he said, "What they told me was, I need more vitamin D and zinc." And that seems to be a common thread between COVID patients and all the research, and I have done a ton of research. My wife asks me what I'm doing several hours a day. It's research, going to doctors, medical doctors and so forth. And vitamin D or sunlight and zinc seem to be two of the most common threads that would help us get through this. Uh, and I'm talking in the long term, getting through this virus. So, my question, based on that, is why are we not educating people? You need more sunlight, you need vitamin D, you need zinc, and so forth, in addition to, if we want to, the three Ws?
So, because the CDC also agrees that that's not the end-all be-all or the solid to, um, avoiding COVID-19 transmission or acquiring COVID-19. So, CDC has specifically said that those are not ways to combat COVID-19. Also, I would suggest too, in some of your research, you may look at the percentage of Americans that already have deficiencies in vit- vitamin D and zinc, because those are a very common problem across the board. So, just because there's a correlation there doesn't mean that it's the only variable for COVID-19 transmission or acquiring that virus. So, that's just some, something to think about.
And I would, I would add, just adding on to your comment, nor are masks the, the only variable, nor are vaccines the only variable.
Sure. Which, and that's why we're saying collective.
I'm asking, I'm asking why health measures, uh, like vitamin D and zinc are not being included in this conversation rather than just the three Ws, which the, the, much of the three Ws are creating more fear than they are hope in recovery from this virus. So, I, I, and I don't need any additional comment, and, and again, I'm not, I'm not pointing my finger at you personally, uh, but I just am concerned that we're not getting the whole story out there, uh, in our county, in our state, and we're just saying, "Everybody put a mask on." And lastly, I'll leave you with this, Mr. Chairman. I just heard on the news at noon today, "We think you need to be wearing a mask at your Thanksgiving dinner in your home." And that is very, and I was said in Wichita, and that was, that's very concerning. Mandates are an intrusion of our freedoms and, and liberty, and when they start telling us we need to do that in our homes, that's just one step further. So, I, I'm, I get kind of emotional about that because liberty and freedom is really important, uh, in this country. Thank you.
All right. Now, we're gonna move on to what we're here for.
A little more information to share.
First off, before we, now, let's, let's get into this one. Let's get the elephant in the room, is the governor's executive order that takes effect twelve oh one tomorrow morning. Robert has probably studied this more than any of us. I've read it seventeen or thirty times my own self. Robert, would you give your perspective on what the governor's executive order, number twenty dash twenty-six, means, if, if all the, all the times you've read it?
Okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll do my best at it.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think, like many of us, we find something new every time we, uh, review it. But in general, um, the executive order, twenty sixty-eight, uh, in that, in that heading, is establishing a face-covering protocol. Okay?
Interesting word.
So, so in terms of protocol, it can mean numerous things, but in essence, this is a, a guideline, if you will, that's being, um, that the governor is presented in the form of an executive order. Now, within, within the executive order, it, it starts out on page three of the, of the order with paragraph one that indicates for those counties out there that have not, uh, that have not opted out of the previous executive order, twenty fifty-two, if they've not opted out of that, well, then, this doesn't apply. For those that have opted out, like we did back in, in July, early July, then the provisions of, of paragraphs two through five, um, are to be followed by, by the county. In comparison with what the city has passed, um, there, there's a couple of items in here that may raise an eyebrow. And if you recall, one of the provisions within the cities has to do with, um, First Amendment in terms of, um, wearing a mask in, um, within churches and things of that nature, by way of example. Um, and, and then the other difference is, in essence, uh, this runs through the end of this year, just a couple more weeks longer than the current city's, um, ordinance, if you will. Um, but it is subject to being terminated earlier or extended at the state level. Uh, for the most part, as you read through it, um, it's, it's things in the past that the commission has promoted informally. In essence, in essence, commenting within the commission chambers to follow the protocols that, um, your own public health department has encouraged, wearing a mask, washing your hands, keeping the distance, and so on and so forth. This only deals with the protocol of face covering, and then it defines what a face covering is, similar to what, uh, the cities did as well. So, um, there's very, there is quite a few similarities, if you will, between this and what the city has. And, and I think an important factor of what is, um, also within this executive order is that it allows, um, it allows the local authorities to determine, at their discretion, um, appropriate enforcement actions. Appropriate enforcement actions. That is in paragraph eight. All right? So, so that's, in, in essence, a little bit more lenient, if you will, from the cities. Recall that the city does have a, a penalty clause if they choose to enforce it. Uh, I believe it's up to fifty dollars, if I remember correctly.
Ten dollars for...
Ten, twenty-five, and fifty.
Okay. So, in, in summary, that, that is, uh, my, my take on the governor's executive order. And once again, it would take effect, um, actually tomorrow morning at whatever it is.
Okay. Now, let's keep our conversation or discussion right now, for this point in time, the governor's executive order. Comments? Questions?
Well, if we take no action, the governor's, uh, order comes in effect. Correct.
Correct. And that's what Ellis County did yesterday morning.
Dave?
And if we take no action, then at some point down the road, we say, "We've had enough of this, we can opt out then."
Correct.
So, we can give it a try. That's what, that's what some of us...
You had information you liked, one of the presenters, at this time, doctor?
Well, just, let's finish up our comments on the governor's mandate. The governor has no enforcement action in her mandate. You pointed that out, so...
Correct.
Uh, my concern was overriding the city's paragraph L, the First Amendment exemption. Um, and, and so there wouldn't be, you know, government Gestapo showing up to churches because it's not in the governor's order, and the city has exempted that. So, uh, you know, my concern has been taking no action would override the city's intention, but really, since there's no enforcement, it, it, it will not change any...
Correct.
...say, that's my little comment. But I do have other information.
Paragraph eight, administrator dressed as determinate appropriate enforcement actions. We have our two top law enforcement people in our room. Do you either want to have a comment on appropriate enforcement actions? I'm putting you on the spot, I realize that.
I'm obviously here without a mask, so that's probably common enough, but the blocking sort of it is, with no enforcement action, there's no criminal penalty. The governor has not put a criminal penalty on this. In fact, I believe back in May, the legislature actually decriminalized any opposition to a public health order. So, it is a civil penalty statewide at this point, which means we have no power, um, to investigate, arrest, fine, whatever, unless the county or city gives us that. I will personally tell you that my office, I mean, you guys have to decide what's important for enforcement in this county, because what we've seen is an increase in child abuse, sex abuse, domestic violence, theft, robbery. I don't know. We can't enforce that because we don't have a court that's open very much.
So, I want you to walk into the podium with some...
So...
...see or hear you very well.
Sorry. So, that also puts a strain on our law enforcement, and what is more important? Is it finding those criminals, or is it enforcing whether or not somebody has a mask That's for you to decide for this county. I know what I see, and in my level of importance, child sex abuse, battery, theft, is a little bit more important, use of our time, use of law enforcement time, investigative powers, than whether or not we're gonna find somebody ten dollars or fifty dollars for not wearing a mask. And that is, to me, I agree with Mr. Pishney. I'm probably not gonna be very popular standing up here, but it is a first, it is a right that we have as Americans to make a decision for ourselves how we're going to handle ourselves. I respect, if I'm in the room with somebody who has a health issue, I will put a mask on. I have my own health issues, I choose not to wear a mask. But that's for you guys to decide. I just think, when we're looking on a scale of one to ten, in order of importance, you guys have to put a criminal penalty on it for it to be enforced. That's the only way to enforce it. Otherwise, you're just saying, "Wear a mask," and everybody goes on and does what they do, and there's no enforcement to that. So, I don't know if you have questions for me, but that's...
I just wanted your comments and appreciate that from your point of view. Thank you.
I didn't know if you wanted to hear from Kevin or not, but if, if...
He's not jumping up.
After you've heard, after you've heard their point of view, I have a motion that I would like to offer.
Okay. Any further comments or discussion on how we perceive the, the governor's mandate that comes effect tomorrow?
And let me ask, I, I think it's appropriate to make these motions as a board of health, or is it, uh, more appropriate to make them after we reconvene, reconvene as a county commission?
It would be more appropriate as you reconvene, if a board of county commission taken the, um, yeah, because you're doing this under consideration as the, uh, as the board of health.
Yeah. So, when we do reconvene, I have a motion, and I would like to go to the floor, please.
Doctor?
Sarah, can you put up the graph that I provided to the commissioners? So, just to provide more information, the board of health, some of you pay attention to the cattle market, others to the stock market, and others to the grain market. Uh, this is what we in medicine pay attention to. This is the, the disease market, or the MMWR report. Um, data, of course, has a lag, and, and I'll admit that this is as of, uh, August twenty-third, but the report was delayed several times because of, uh, controversy with the numbers, but the numbers have been cleaned up by reputable organizations, including the CDC and Kansas's own, um, Kansas Health Institute, to which my wife is a board member. Um, and it shows when the mask mandates were instituted or not instituted by certain counties, you'll see that the counties which did institute them had greater numbers at the time of the order in July, and the counties that did not, uh, use, have mask orders like ours had lower numbers, as Dave has pointed out earlier. Uh, you see where the lines are headed, and I have no doubt that there was a crossover point, and those lines have since diverged, and if I could provide you newer numbers, I would, but, uh, just for your, uh, viewing pleasure, uh, the, the mask use had an impact, uh, both, or, and lack of use certainly had a lack of importance in Kansas, uh, impact in Kansas counties. The other sheet I provided, and Sarah can put that up as well, uh, and again, the numbers we can dispute, but they do show, uh, that we, uh, in Fannie County, as this was reported, we're twenty-second in the country by counties with cases per hundred thousand. Colleen part, reported a lower number, but we're still, uh, quite high. Um, again, we, I guess they're doing better than Seward and Ford, uh, to which, whom we compare ourselves a lot, and Martin County is way up at the top as number two. I think Colleen reported number one. Um, I know we've discussed data a lot and positivity rates. For me, uh, what I know positively, positively is that I don't know who has this virus and who can pass it to me. Um, I know positively that more people have died in this county than died from the flu in my twenty-five years of memory here. in my twenty-five years of memory here, per year. I do know that we are running out of personnel positively at the hospital. And I do know that we've had to divert patients, as you've heard. And I know positively that our kids are not in school because of the impact of the virus on mainly the adult population, leave workers in the school system. So, um, I'd like you to consider that information as we, uh, reconvene as a county board commissioners. Thank you.
Just, Chairman, just, just one point of information on the Norton County. Much of that was due to one nursing home that was not, uh, very health conscious.
You ready to move back to commissioners?
Well, we're going to wind up bouncing back and forth depending on the motion. You want to get this session on our other options out of the way first? Or just move it to the county commissioner and then do that?
Board of county commissioners.
When you're ready, I'll offer the motion to, to recess the board of health and reconvene as a board of county commissioners.
Second.
They've been seconding. All those in favor of reconvening as the board of Finy County Commissioners, say aye.
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 Motion is carried. Mr. Commissioner Pishney, you have indicated you have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, we, we've been provided, uh, a couple of different resolution possibilities, uh, and, and drafts, I should say. Uh, and, uh, we've also been provided the state mandate, uh, information, the city's ordinance, the school districts, uh, uh, information about what they're doing. And I appreciate, uh, Steve Carne being here today and participating in this meeting, as a matter of fact. Uh, the resolution that I favor, uh, that we have in front of us as a draft, that I don't necessarily agree with every paragraph or everything that's said in the resolution, but I think it gives us a, as a county commission, the best flexibility, uh, going forward, is the one that's titled Resolution and Order Removing State Face Covering Protocol in Finy County, Kansas, which in essence is opting out of the state's, uh, Executive Order twenty dash sixty-eight, and I would move that we adopt that resolution.
You're here a second for purposes of discussion, or does the motion die?
If I'm seconding, so we can discuss it.
Right. First off, I disagree with what you think that resolution does.
It's, it's this one right here, just the front and back.
Oh, okay. Excuse me, but just for clarity, I believe both of them may have been titled the same.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize the other, I, I just hit certain pages in the other one, so I hadn't looked at the title. It's the one, the front and a little bit on the back that we were just, we were just providing.
And once again, just for clarity, that one there does exempt you out of, um, of the, um, governor's executive order.
Right.
But does not put anything back in its place.
Right. And that's why I'm saying it gives us flexibility moving forward if we, if we want to do something.
Just, just for clarity.
I have difficulties with many provisions in this, this longer one. Uh, and it also, this one that I'm recommending, or that my motion is about, also acknowledges the fact that the city has put in place, uh, its ordinance. So, uh, I think that's a proper recognition, uh, of an entity that already has an ordinance. But it's, sorry, sorry about that confusion, Mr. Chairman. But it's this, it's, uh, one, a little bit over one-page resolution.
Gentlemen, we do have three options. Number one is the motion that's on the floor is to opt out. Second option is to just let the governor's executive order stand. We do nothing, no action, and it will take a place, take effect. The third one is a resolution that replaces the governor's for Finy County, as a resolution that Finy County establishes it. So, before we vote on that one, I think we need to understand, before I call that vote, I want to, to have a discussion on the resolution that would opt out, would establish a resolution for Finy County. So, to be saying that, I'm going to ask Robert to explain the difference between Finy County resolution and the governor's resolution, if you can.
Oh, okay. Yes, I'll, I'll.
And then we all know what the resolution for the motion on the floor is.
Correct. Um, the, the other resolution, which in essence you have to opt out of the governor's to implement your own, uh, protocol, and that's exactly what this does. It is extremely similar to the one that, uh, the governor has proposed, except for, uh, the differences, the specific differences that I pointed out earlier, uh, which includes, in essence, in, in the one that replaces the governor's executive order, it does include that provision for, uh, religious, um, benefits. Is, is an exclusion, is an exclusion from the, from this, um, um, resolution or order, um, which that was not the case. Um, it, it does begin at twelve oh one tomorrow morning, just as the governor's did. It does identify the ending on twelve thirty-one at midnight, unless you choose to rescind it earlier, or if you choose to extend it. In essence, this puts the board of county commissioners in control of the very similar, very similar, uh, aspects of what the, um, Executive Order twenty sixty-eight put in place. One other thing that, uh, is worth noting is that on this one here, in particular, that is marked number one, paragraph one, which is on page two, on page two. This does not, this does not circumvent or override what is currently in place by Garden City. It does not. It specifically states that if you have an ordinance in place, this does not apply. And it is specific to municipalities in Finy County. So, if Holcomb chooses to put anything in place, anything, they do not come under the counties at that point. So that is the uniqueness about this one, that the governors, in essence, said, it has to meet or exceed what she has put in place, or you have to follow the governor's guidelines. I went the other direction on my, uh, on crafting this, saying, if you put anything in place to help out in terms of a face covering ordinance within municipality, then it, the counties does not apply. Okay? And, and once again, there's no penalty fees or anything, or, or involved in this, on this one. So.
Question.
Okay.
Don't do too much, Robert. Uh, if Holcomb takes no action, they would follow this, then?
Correct. Okay. And that would be the same as I had, well, I had a call from the. Okay. That would be the same if it was, uh, if, if you didn't do anything and, and the governors prevailed.
And I had a couple of calls from Holcomb that would be against some of this, that would be contrary to some of this that's in the, uh, the resolution that you're referencing.
I asked for this discussion so that, uh, the commission is fully aware that we have three options. Uh, okay, now I'm going to move it back to the motion on the floor is to opt out of the governor's, as Finy County as we did earlier. So, discussion on Lon's motion to opt out.
Let me, uh, provide some additional clarification on why I'm offering that motion. There's things, and, and I, first of all, I, I respect and appreciate staff time for doing these options and educating us and so forth. I, I don't want to be negligent in, in not thanking you for, for that. But where it says, uh, number two, under further resolve, it says, inside, uh, a, a public space or in line to enter a public space. I, to me, that's mandating and getting so nitpicky about when those things are supposed to be on. I have any, I have an issue with any reference to outdoor, uh, uh, public spaces, e- even without the six feet, because again, we should be promoting sunlight and vitamin D, not discouraging, you know, that in outdoor spaces. Uh, and, and I've, you know, I've, I've watched these youth football games and so forth going on, and we have exemptions for athletes and so forth, but yet, somebody's out playing in the park? You know, I, I, I have trouble with that. I have trouble with the fact that this could go on until the end of the year, rather than the cities, uh, that ends in the middle of December unless they renew it, and so forth. So, I, I have several issues with it, uh, and it's still, in my opinion, is a mandate for face coverings or, uh, wearing masks, and I just simply have difficulty with that. So, my, my answer to that is the motion that I put on the floor. And then lastly, the motion, or, excuse me, the resolution that Ellis County was, was, and this is smaller print, uh, was considering yesterday morning, was very similar to the resolution that I've, uh, have on the floor as a motion today. Uh, they chose not to act in spirit of full disclosure, uh, but theirs was a simple opt-out, uh, as what I'm suggesting is what their county council was providing to me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For clarification, I'm going to call Lon's motion with the, just option one. Is that fair?
Sure, sure. Yeah, I, I didn't realize they were titled the same.
Well, they're titled the same, so let's maybe clarify as option one is the motion on the floor to opt out. Discussion, further discussion. Larry?
When we started this process clear back in March and April, you know, at that time, we were looking at numbers in the hospital, and this is the only thing I really ever hung my hat on, with the number of patients that were in our hospitals. And St. Catherine's was running anywhere from four to maybe up to nine. But after listening to the reports the last few weeks, I can see that this thing has stepped up to a whole different level than we're used to. Not only our hospital, but area hospitals. And it's, um, taxing not only the hospitals, but the staffs that run the hospitals. And so that, that was concerning to me. Now, I, I guarantee you, I don't know if this will help it or not. You know, it's, it's like a seasonal thing, appears to me, like, it's just like the flu. It comes in the fall, and, and we've got it, and we've got to deal with it. But the light at the end of the tunnel, hopefully, are the new vaccines, the different vaccines that are coming on, at a ninety percent effective rate. Those, I think, will make a big, big difference in how we handle this thing. But, um, for those reasons and the numbers that we're seeing, I'm going to vote against this with option one.
Doctor?
And, and I would follow Larry in that vote, but I would also agree with Commissioner Pishney that our local officials know best, and, and I don't think, uh, our governor understands the situation in Finy County. Uh, she certainly, uh, understands Douglas and Shawnee and counties back east. Uh, so, uh, I, I, it is, uh, uh, I am of the opinion that we should opt out of the governor's mandate, but, uh, not in this way.
We, did you call for a vote?
I'm going to call for a vote. Those are opinions, discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to opt out, what I'm referring to is option one. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is failed. That puts us with two options, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman.
We can follow the governor's resolution and just do nothing, or discuss option two, the resolution that was presented. Discussion. Dave?
I'm ready to offer a motion.
You are?
If, if you're ready to accept one. I, I'm going to offer the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we do nothing and let the governor's mandate take over, as, as we've discussed all day long today. We can opt out later. Uh, but I have a strong hunch that, that she isn't going to give up. And so if we try to opt out and do what, what Commissioner Pishney asks, some of these days, there's going to be a, um, a connection to some funding or some, some service that comes to our health department from the state that suddenly gets bored because here we are out here fighting the governor. So, uh, we can fight a battle and lose a war, and to me, I think it's just time to, to let the governor's order take over, and let's see where it goes. I hope that it has miraculous results. I doubt that it will. But we can look at it for thirty days, or two weeks, or whatever, and then consider again. So, that's my motion.
I'll second the motion for discussion. Discussion on that line of thought. Dave, Larry?
The only, the only problem I have with the government just opting out and not doing anything, letting the governors take effect, I think it affects our, our religious organizations and our local churches.
But who's going to enforce it, Larry?
I know, they're not. But being able to clarify the exemptions that are listed in one Robert, it's got on this option three, I think makes more sense for us. I, personal opinion.
I'm sorry, Doctor?
And I would agree with Larry, uh, but I also think we need to show positive local control, um, and not default, uh, our judgment to Governor in Topeka. Um, so I would not be in favor proceeding in this way.
Further discussion? All those in favor of Dave's motion, option two, to accept the governor's mandate and proceed, let it later date if we want to readdress opting out in a different fashion. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it's pretty close.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion app, opposed, same, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Defeated, three to two?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose, uh, Resolution number twenty, uh, twenty dash, and I'd like a, a resolution number.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty, uh, twenty dash twenty-seven, which is the multi-page document we called previously option three. I, I do think it provides the city, uh, backup on, on their First Amendment, uh, clause, and it also appropriately extends, uh, these, uh, guidance, uh, to recommend a mask, uh, require, I would say, throughout the county and reduces confusion for our citizens. So my motion is for twenty twenty dash twenty-seven, uh, the full Finy County resolution.
I'll second.
You're the second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, we're somewhere in, in a state of confusion here. So can we reiterate now what exactly this resolution does for a few of us on the commission and a whole bunch of other folks?
That's a fair question.
Sure. I will go ahead and, and review it one more time.
Okay.
Uh, once again, this is a, a hybrid, if you will, of the governor's executive order. What it does do specifically is that it puts the board of county commissioners in charge of this face, uh, covering, um, for, for the county, countywide, only in those places that do not have those incorporated cities that. that do not have, those incorporated cities that do not have a, an ordinance in place, any type of a mask ordinance in place. So, in essence, your resolution or order here does not affect the city of Garden City while their ordinance is in place. And to continue, it does include the First Amendment, um, religious aspect within our resolution and order here, so that those that, um, may fall outside of the cities still have that option to practice that as well. So, we're not, um, we're not creating an issue between the two there. And then once again, it does, um, it does, by this resolution order, does end at the, at twelve o'clock on December thirty-first, unless you choose to end it earlier, or if you choose to extend it. So, it puts the control in, in the Board of County Commissioners' hands, does not conflict with the city's current ordinance, and still provides, um, what, what I've been hearing today is a propensity to try and embrace this to cause perhaps a change on some of the statistics that we've been seeing a little as one.
One quick question, and boiled it down to simple terms, with some exceptions, those five and under and so on, this does, will require mandate mask-wearing in Fannie County outside of the corporate limits of cities, is that correct?
That's correct. It is, it is very, very similar to, uh, as I stated, very, very similar to the governor's executive order, um, with being a little bit more lenient and providing you with the authority as opposed to the governor.
Okay. And I'd like for that there is no quote penalty clause in this one.
There's, there's no penalty, uh, clause in this one at all.
Further comments?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I'm very likely to vote against this anyhow for reasons that should be obvious based on my comments, so I won't go through that again. But the one that does concern me a little bit, uh, is two A on the, I think that's the second page under the B of further resolve, in that the city's, uh, uh, requirement of that says, "In, inside any indoor public space where distancing of six feet at all times is not possible." Thus, I am not wearing a mask today because I am not a mask wearer, but I believe I've got the six feet spacing. Here, in this one that you're, that we're considering, just says, "Inside any indoor public space." So, if, if we think that distancing is an option to wearing a mask, uh, if it's as viable as wearing a mask, I should say, it's a better way for me to state that, uh, we've not given that option, uh, to people in this ordinance, in my understanding of it, I mean, in this resolution, I'm saying. And then I'm, I'm, I'm still a little bit bothered by the end of the year timeframe, uh, but that's a very minor point because, like, it, it is, uh, possible to rescind it before then, but, uh, I, I think in two A, uh, we've got a, we've got more limiting factor than what the city does.
You have the prerogative to amend the motion if you so choose?
Well, I, no, I, I'm, I'm probably going to vote against it either way, so, but I just wanted to call that everyone's attention.
I just want to share a concern, Mr. Chairman. I did not see this document until today, which is not anybody's fault. I know our, our administrator worked long and hard over the last couple of days to get this stuff done, but, but these, these decisions that have to be made on not quite enough information with enough time to understand it make it a little tougher, so, that's my.
Well, our hand was kind of forced. We have.
Yeah, I understand.
Eight hours before that decision is made, and, uh, in Robert's defense. We both started this discussion as soon as the governor's executive order was announced. I don't know how many hours I've, he's spent on it, but I've spent three, four meetings with him myself, and I do not believe this was crafted until sometime this morning, final, final version, so, pre-examination was a little tough.
Chairman, uh, if it would please the chair, I would accept a friendly amendment from anyone at the table that add that language of the distancing of six feet at all times not possible, uh, just so that there's no, uh, conflict with the, uh, the city's ordinance.
Do you have a number and line number?
Two A.
Yeah, it's two A or two A.
On the second page.
Reword two A for me, as you would like to see it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, and again, I'm not going to be a part of the amendment or the motion, but just to word exactly what the city. I know, but just to, to give you the wording that the city has for that line item, is the city's two A says, "Inside any indoor public space where distancing of six feet at all times is not possible." That's verbatim from the city ordinance.
Yeah, that's section two, uh, A. Would anyone else like to offer a friendly amendment to that?
No, I, either, I, you know, if you want to put the signature, that's fine. Do you have the wording?
No.
Well, that's fine. Well, we can, let's, let's do this wording, just.
Here's the wording from the city ordinance.
Someone's got to tell me that that's what they wanted then.
No, I know, but I mean, if, if you need it, it's what I'm saying.
The motion is two A, "Inside any indoor public space where distancing of six feet is not possible," is that what you?
Well, what, I just gave it to the.
That's exactly, that's exactly what the city says, yes.
Is there a second to that amendment to the motion?
I'll second that.
Who offered the motion? He offered the amendment.
Dr. Clifford.
And they, they just.
How do, how are we going to get this in, in place without publishing it in the paper and make it effective tonight at midnight or whenever?
It, it will be, is ineffective once passed.
Okay. Further discussion on amendment to the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment signify the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Now, the motion on the floor, further discussion on that motion to accept what we now call Resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-seven.
For all eternity, three.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the reason, the main, one of the main reasons I want to support this, um, motion is that, uh, it gives us control and not to be, and that's the thing that is really a big selling point in my thoughts of a little control.
And I also want to point out that city's ordinance, uh, has potential expiration of December sixteenth. So, uh, we may, you know, we wouldn't supersede their ordinance, but we, our ordinance may go into effect in city, for the city, should they change.
Like, could it renew theirs or let ours stand?
So, we may need to meet to, uh, resolve that.
Further discussion? Now, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution number twenty dash twenty-seven, the multi-page resolution we've had in front of us that has been amended, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried forward one. Let it be so. Further discussion that should be brought up to the commission at this time in this special meeting?
Thank you.
Hearing none. Meeting is adjourned.